Come to order and be and open the this session of the tri-town meeting. The first item on the agenda is the Neshoba Regional High School Space Study Task Force Update. Who's who's giving us an update on the task force?
As everyone looks around.
Since I'm a solo attendee in the room, I could say a few words.
Oh, good.
Why is there two?
That's right.
But you are you wrote such a complete letter recording.
Right. I apologize. Um, we've been meeting for, I guess, five or so months.
Since.
Since December, I think.
Yes.
And I've only attended the most recent three meetings. Sort of a brief overview summaries that there's been exploring about what are the issues that the staff has been facing of the school. Three sessions ago, the Mr. Clary talked about facilities and the various inadequacies of the maintaining building or where it's not insulated, poorly insulated, or where various roofs are leaking, where air handlers were never installed correctly or not maintained, or various things of that nature. Boilers needing attention or coming to end of life that he's got his eye on. Prior to that, I don't have much to say about.
Yeah, it's been mostly, you know, sort of trying to get a sense of what the deficiencies are, what, what, you know, more recent school construction, renovation, remodel projects have looked like, or what what kind of space we need looking forward because what what you needed in 1960 when this building was designed is not what you need in 2020, whatever when we might actually have something better. I mean, there there are the science labs, which, you know, that proposed project did not move forward, but the deficiencies that were identified, that that MSBA or whatever it is, identified were worse than what we were aware of. And so, you know, the the rest of the building is, I hate to say it, but I I I think in the end, we're going to be looking at a sizable project.
Can you quantify sizable?
Well, look at, look at the fact that the ad and reno at center was thirty-five.
It's going to come in around thirty-two, but.
Well, yeah, but the estimate was thirty-five. And I I have no idea.
So would the high school be just a reno or would be an add at the same time?
I think that's not a point of view yet.
Yeah, part of it is just at this point, coming up with what we think needs to be, what we think the deficiencies are to to try to file a statement of interest with MSBC.
MSBA.
MSBA. And then they kind of drive it. They'll tell us.
That's exactly right.
So some of the conversation we've had in the last two meetings is querying the staff, the principal, and the head guidance person, as well as the leading coordinator personnel. Whose name I names I all forget.
The stem coordinator.
And sort of trying to quiz them as to, you know, what is the experience inside the the school? Where where is it that people meet up with the inadequacy of the building? And one of the key items I take away from what the principal has to say is that he has run out of space to have meetings of many varieties of curriculum to occur there. So for example, this year, he split one of the art rooms because he needed to have an opportunity for section sections, not just one section at a time, but two. So that divided up space, they could have two different kinds of activities going on. Throughout the school, he's been cannibalizing rooms here and there and converting them into players of classroom space. Obligations of the state that are impending are, I think, you're not allowed to expel students anymore. So you're required to have a classroom space and therefore office space to handle these non non participating, but still in high school students. So suddenly, bang, you need a couple rooms for this kind of state requirement. Some of your populations have significant space requirements, special education, kids have a particular particular space needs that are, you know, non non average in terms of their desire. So that that activity is creates a particular kind of demand. So what it's clear, clear from the principal's responses to the questions are, and how he responds to his own staff, saying, you know, can we do this? And his answer is, I'll see what I can do. And that basically comes from, I don't know where I'm going to find space or how we reschedule stuff, but I'll cannibalize some space somewhere in order to make that particular, I couldn't on my idea to have it. One of the beefs that I have about our process so far is that we would like, I would like to see, and at least at least one member, perhaps others of the task force want to be able to quantify the relationship, the program to the school. And how is it, how is it the current program curriculum creates a demand, you know, what is what are the space needs of the program compared to the actual space of the school? And a place I have a strong difference of opinion is that the superintendent says, I can fit 1,250 students in the school. He says, I have enough classrooms to fit that space. But the principal says, today, I don't have enough room to add one more class. All my classes are used up nearly. There may be one period during the day or another period during the day in which there's a spare class of two or two or three. But his his usage of all the classrooms is above above ninety-five percent, above ninety-eight percent, he says, of non-home periods of the day. So although you can fit a lot of people in the home room, according to the superintendent's claim, 1,250, right now, current occupancy, which is around a thousand, once you start moving them around, the classrooms that are smaller than your home room size, you run out of space. And I would like to really be able to quantify, you know, the actual usage of the space demanded by the curriculum and get that out on paper and quantify it so we can actually see it. And it's actually the kind of thing that you have to produce for the MSBA to get a hard figure about, you know, what do you need? You know, so you have you have space and you have time, and we use up those two resources with your facility, you know, you can demonstrate that you're short classrooms or not short classrooms. So we haven't really had this discussion about my particular unhappiness where it's basically schizophrenic. The superintendent's been claiming for years, there's room for more people in the high school, but right now, there's the high school at beyond capacity.
Let's jump into this a little bit. I haven't been at the task force meeting, but the issues you described really are mutually exclusive. It depends how you go about doing it, and that's part of the whole, you know, discussion of what what we need, what we want, and not we being the school issue, but we being the communities, you know, what is acceptable and desirable. You you can continue to educate kids and probably educate kids quite well in lots of different types of buildings, okay? But, you know, what what is most ideal to the curriculum? And you can teach a curriculum, you can fit 1,250 kids in that building. That would limit their choices, that would limit their their exposures, that would limit a lot of aspects of education. Would most kids survive that education relatively well? Probably, okay. But if we had other opportunities and other facilities for them, could we help some kids who may not survive in such a restricted environment? And could we, you know, the kids who do, could we make them excel more in that environment? I think, you know, that's what, you know, the case will be. Again, I haven't been in the task force meeting so on a regular basis at all, so I can't really speak to the specifics of it, but I just I just don't think it should be seen as like it's mutually exclusive to what you're saying. I mean, I don't think, no, if anyone disagrees, then, you know, we should talk about what the building needs to look like to fit the curriculum. But the idea that it's very busy up there right now, while at the same time, it could fit 1,250 students, I don't think is schizophrenic. It depends what what you're looking to do.
Yeah, but but what I'm hearing is, is that there seems to be a difference of opinion between Michael and principal.
I'm not hearing that.
Well, no, I'm here.
No, it's an interpretation on my.
I'm I'm hearing an interpretation that that the school's at capacity in one regard, but yet we can fit another 250 kids.
Well, yeah, if you look at how many classrooms, how many classroom spaces there are, and say that your 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 standard instructional space that you would put like an English class or a math class into fits twenty-five, and you multiply twenty-five by however many there are, and then add in more kids that you could fit into the gym because you could have a couple of gym classes going at the same time, things like that. Yes, you could come up with a 1,250 or whatever, but realistically, when you start considering that there there are classes that that aren't going to have 25 kids in them just because of the nature of the class, or some of the special ed needs that they you just because you've only got ten kids doesn't mean that you can you can use just half the space and put a partition down, raise the other half of the space for something else because probably part of their issue is they need more space in order to 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 function at their best. When you start looking at that stuff, it's like the math, yes, the math, you could, you can fit more than we have currently, but realistically, when you start looking at at programs and that that you're, it's not like saying, okay, everybody's getting the same thing, so we just divide them all up. You do have.
No, I understand that, but but Michael's been saying 1,250 is is the magic number. Now, if it's not, then we have to get get to a consensus on, you know, are we at capacity? Are we not at capacity? And if we are at capacity, what do we have to do? So I mean, that's, you know.
I don't think he ever really said it's the magic number. I said, he that's the ultimate build capacity of the school. I don't think he's ever said, I know he's never said, that he wanted to educate 1,250 kids in that building. He's just said what it could do. And the issues is it, the issue of looking at the building, you know, isn't just a capacity issue, I'm sure.
I understand, George, but but Michael shouldn't be saying we can we can we can house 1,250 kids. If you can house 1,250 kids, then say that and and decide, you know, what you need to have to have a a good curriculum and what we need to do to the building. So I mean, you're telling me he's saying two things. We we can pack 1,250 in, but we really, we can't. Well, then what is it?
He's not.
No, 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 but but.
It's a theory theoretically.
But you guys need to figure out what that number is, and if 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 it's less than 1,250, or if it's a thousand, or if we're at capacity now, what do we need to do? I mean, let's not throw out, we can theoretically hold 1,250 kids. If we can't, we can't. Let's figure out what we need to do, you know, to provide the kind of quality educations. I mean, the 1,250 number, it probably is a moot point, but I we keep hearing that over and over again.
I don't think we heard it over and over again. I don't necessarily remember. I thought I heard 1,200, but maybe I haven't paid as close attention.
But tell us, tell us what the number is, and if we have to, we need to do something with the building, let's do something with the building.
From my point of view at the task task meeting and other, at least one other member is saying, we need to talk about program because the program decides.
Exactly.
The program will.
Exactly.
Here's a really, really simple example of a program. Say you have a hundred students in school, and they're all, they're all going to the science classes, which only fit twenty-four in them, or something like that. So you have, you can fit twenty-four, twenty-four students in in four sections, and then you have six people left over that you need a section for.
Right.
Or maybe you spread them out and you have five sections.
Right.
But that's a great example of, you might have three home rooms of thirty-five people, but you need five classrooms in order to actually have a program for this school. And this is the exact calculation that that I and other members of the task force really want to explore.
Yeah.
Because the real discussion is not what, not that we need a better school or a newer school or more classes, we talk about what is the current program and its demands, and what is the desirable program that they would like to do today? And what is the intended program that they desire to do? And how does that compare to what this the district wishes to fund? And that's a, that's so far an undiscussable, undiscussable thing.
Why is it undiscussable?
We haven't gotten that far. We can't figure out how to manipulate the, I as an individual who, I'm just a citizen visitor of the committee, I'm not a school committee member, and I'm late to this discussion that's been going on for the last five or 10 years about, you know, how how to figure out, how to have this discussion in a way that actually is not only about facility, but it's really about how you run your school, you know, and how is the school, school committee, you know, run itself in order to have this kind of discussion? So I think it's a very big discussion. It's not just about building, building, having a couple more classrooms. And I speculate, but I don't know, that it's not a discussion that the superintendent's excited to have.
But I think it's necessary.
Well, I I don't think the speculation is accurate. I mean, I just don't think there's anything to suggest that. I mean, one of the reasons we started looking at the building and trying to reach out and get everybody involved is because the facility has issues. I think we all saw that clearly during the science lab issue a couple of years ago. I mean, those science labs, you know, as one example, the roof, the windows, those things are in bad shape. There are different ways to address it, okay? But that was one of the motivating aspects. So certainly, when you get into what the solutions are, then looking at the program is certainly part of it. And I don't think the superintendent has any objection whatsoever to looking at the program. But it's not the only focus, but I but I think it's unfair and inaccurate to say that he doesn't want or is willing to.
And I'll say, and I'll agree, there are multiple dimensions of the school is, has some kind of capacity issues, like there's not enough parking space for the current population that shows up. Getting people on the buses through is a challenge. The site was kind of developed, designed for seven-hundred-ish people, and so the people movement is a challenge in its own way. The cafeteria process is like four periods of twenty-two minutes to accommodate the students, so that affects your whole schedule in terms of just common area. Your auditorium doesn't fit the entire school. I don't know, it's six or seven-hundred of at a time that could fit. So there there are multiple dimensions of of reaching or beyond desirable, maybe not required, but desirable things to have in the school. And then another measure is, you know, classes, you know, what's available for classes, or perhaps, perhaps in another sense, you know, what would the teachers do for a program or curriculum if they knew that was not such a difficult thing for the principal to be able to arrange to have additional sections for some.
Yeah.
Something that they want to do. So I I completely agree and understand that there's this, in multiple different measurable ways, the high school is at an uncomfortable place, and it's a judgment call as to whether you call that capacity or not.
Is there an established timeline for when the Space Needs Committee hopes to have a report or a recommendation of?
Um, it's not expressed in my presence, but in terms of the MSBA statement of interest, I think the the window is January, February to submit this thing. So it appears that getting enough information to, you know, compile that statement is going to be November to December. I think superintendent and the school committee is going to be looking for a particular recommendation so that they can decide whether to approve this statement of interest.
The goal was to have some sort of a, you know, to have have a couple of sort of checkpoint reports, you know, every six months or so. So in theory, you know, sometime in the next couple of months, and then sometime around January.
Well, if your date for getting a statement of interest off to MSBA is January, you've got about six months, and not much happens in the summer. So that's three or four months. Have you got enough time to do it?
Um, the statement of interest, from what I've read, is pretty general, that you basically do some justification, but there's also post-filing, okay, tell us more information will be MSBA, and then will you pass the hurdle to, okay, into the larger queue of really getting on board to.
Well, what will you be asking for? I mean, are you going to be asking for square feet? Are you going to be asking for millions, you know, N million dollars, or what what what?
I don't think we know yet, and I think actually the statement of interest process anticipates that schools may may have a point of view, but won't necessarily be the MSBA will accept that point of view. So I think they're going to look closely at it as well.
Right, as you called it, the original statement of interest in center schools is a loophole. And the solution is, you know, it doesn't do the loophole. What do we do so I have a loophole?
There is, if you can poke around on the school website, there is a task force link after you click on the school committee. And one of the documents in there is the is a architect's consultant document that was prepared for the science rooms. And in there, there's some great spreadsheets, which basically inventory the entire square footage of the sp- of the school, as well as the classroom capacities, and then compare that to a hypothetical science schedule, so you can actually see the methodology for what's desirable to do in terms of calculating, you know, how many classrooms do we need for a program? So I would anticipate some kind of process like that as part of it, as well as the forty-page narrative that 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 they produced, that that's, those are all informative to a statement of interest.
Right, right. Well, if you, we use that as a guideline, I mean, that at the time, that was like eight, eight point some odd million dollars just for that. So what it's sounding like, it's, we're going to be north of that number.
I think it's conceivable, one of the things that people look at, that are, they'll take it seriously, is, you know, should a high school be rebuilt on that space, or perhaps next door, so.
Next door.
Well, across the street.
Oh, Fox Run.
There's a big piece of land across the street, which solves some of the space issues that happen in the current space, so that's, you know, speculative, hypothetical, that's distinctly, you know, building a whole new building that has another twenty classrooms.
That's assume, that assumes that we're able to buy that piece of property.
Right, right, assuming the voters approve such a thing.
Well, or if the people who have the property want to sell.
Are you seriously talking about building in this school?
No, it's not been discussed. I'm just speculating about the range of possibility.
It wouldn't be unusual.
Depending on magnitude of of what needs to be done, it wouldn't, you know, there are times it's cheaper to build new than than try to renovate, so.
You can look at the Combes Civic at school as an example, as a thought of maybe transforming the interior of that and got essentially a new school, like the center school was when we were done.
You look at a lot of towns, and again, I haven't been involved, I don't know, but a lot of towns are replacing high schools at that age, a lot of these high school projects you see.
It wouldn't be unusual for MSBA to want to see that assessment either, to, you know, if you're, if we're going to put X millions of dollars into the school, maybe doesn't make more sense to to build new versus versus renovate?
Didn't we just do a substantial building project ten years ago?
I believe we did.
Yes, we did. It was like twenty-four million or something like that. Yeah.
Well, there's the magic three million in that twenty-four somewhere.
The magic three million?
Yeah, the three million, that, the origin of the deficiency bond. Have you forgotten so soon?
He wasn't here.
He wasn't here.
The the deficiency bond that was.
It had to be higher than that, yes, yes.
So in any case, sort of brief survey, what's next? Numerous members, part of members of the task force will be going to visit recently renovated schools over the next couple of weeks, just to show intel opportunities and some opportunity to quiz the neighboring, some of the neighboring towns we're going to visit to see, you know, what's the consequence of these new structures or renovations in terms of your experience as an administrator or teacher? Does it change, change quality of life, as well as change the quality of curriculum or in other ways? So at least we have firsthand.
Yeah.
Statements on that.
I think we flog that topic today.
Well, well, I'm I'm sure we can talk about it some more, but Mark has another meeting to go to.
Running through my time board meeting.
Well, thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Well, the next item on our agenda is concession stand status and final cost overrun figures. So what's 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 the news on the snack shack?
Well, it looks like it's just about done, and.
But what's the educational impact of having that?
So it's just well done, and we've been able to trim the price on it quite a bit, mainly to the Mr. Clary's credit, because he essentially became the general contractor of the project himself, designed the project himself, and that type of thing. So we thought, we thought it was going to be a three-hundred-thousand-dollar project on the project that, in many instances, in many places, is that type of project, is a substantial less project. It looks like you totaled overrun, which we originally thought was going to be, you know, upwards of behind one-hundred thousands, it's only going to be about sixty-five thousand dollars.
So we're looking at, what was it, original one-fifty?
One-fifty to one-seventy-five overrun, we thought, yeah.
No, no, I think the original project was like one-fifty?
No, the original, no, it was part of the two-point-one-million-dollar track project that I'm doing. It's the, it's the last piece of that project.
Okay, but I mean.
It was more like three-hundred.
Yeah, I think it was always in two-fifty, three-hundred.
Okay, so it's now what then?
Do you have any exact figure, like?
The estimate, well, to date, we've spent one-hundred-seventy-three-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-three dollars and estimated final cost. Things remaining are about another twenty thousand, so probably one-hundred-ninety-three.
Right, and that's why two-thousand is going to be a one-seventy-five over, and that's sixty-five over, maybe seventy-five.
I mean, I looked at the bill, and I'm having, still having a hard time that something, that building is close to two-hundred thousand dollars. I'm just having a hard time understanding how.
Yeah, I mean.
I walked around the damn thing around election time, and it's like, how is this two-hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, well, a couple of things. First of all, it included the rehab of the other building on the right-hand side, okay? So there's two buildings, now that that garage is rehabbed with it. Secondly, a lot of it frankly has to do with the the procurement laws and that type of thing. It's expensive to build public buildings of any type. They're very, very hard to build for for short dollars, just a fact. And in this particular case, there was some site work that had to be accomplished. It needed a tie into the septic system, so that, you know, takes takes money. And, you know, obviously, just the design, both of the septic and the building itself.
Yeah, so so part of that one-ninety-five is includes the rehab of the the building next to it? Okay, right.
Was that part of the original scope of the project?
Well, the original scope of the project was to build it all into one new building. This is because we had a reasonably serviceable building despite, because that storage and stuff like that, so originally the storage was, by the end of the new concession building, it was going to be taken down, but it was, since it was a reasonably good building, it was just high, it was cheaper to come down.
Okay, all right. So are we done with snack shack? The next item on our agenda is any meetings, workshops, or other sessions during the summer months for planning purposes? I'm not sure what that means. Does that mean anything to you?
Well, it just says, are there are there any meetings planned during the summer relative to, you know, any long, short-term, long-term, you drop right there? Okay, well, zoom right along.
So the final item on our agenda is update on Neshoba Regional School District five-year plan progress.
What five-year plan? Capital five-year plan?
All I know is what I see.
There are, I I think, we, there are several, you know, five-year plans, you know, that were developed between the school committee and the district. There was one previous, and then there was one that was done more recently with goals and objectives, which addressed a number of areas.
Well, you talk about strategic plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was about ten. Yeah, that was about ten years ago, or was originally, nine years ago, I believe. And...
Well, there was one that was done more recently.
I may just be blanking, Stan, I don't know about that. I mean, we always have, we have an annual district improvement plan, is that we're speaking about? We do that every year. We update it and it probably looks at a longer scope of, of a few years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's updated annually, but, you know, it looks forward for a number of years, well, just by the nature of things that are on it. So we update that annually. Last year, the school committee did a community survey for some input into that and, you know, so the plan is updated regularly, but it's not a five-year plan per se. It was a five-year plan that I was thinking of being using capital plan, it was not just a few years. So, you know, that's an ongoing thing and we're certainly open to any ideas and suggestions if you feel it should be part of that.
Well, maybe, maybe in the fall we can ask, you know, but what's, what's the progress against that? Because I know I print, we printed out, there was the previous one and there was one that was...
Okay, that's the district improvement plan, we updated the district improvement plan.
Yeah, right, so, you know, in terms of, you know...
Yeah, we'd be, we could get that information, absolutely. That wouldn't be a problem at all.
So, is there anything else that's properly before the committee tonight?
At the moment...
Who's the next host? Is it Lancaster or...
I'd be the poor person to ask.
No, usual rotation would be Lancaster.
Okay. Or is it Lancaster in, in September?
September. We'll let them know.
All right, it's your turn.
Ten o'clock meeting is adjourned.
Good deal. You guys are...